To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone's here except for Josh, didn't make it tonight. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, I have two items I would like to add to the new business. One would be the appointment of Jed, how do you say his last name?
Lutkin.
Lutkin.
And that would be 18?
Yep, I very pronounce it, Lou-Jed, too, so.
Hey, good.
Jed Lutkin to the EDA. And then I would also like to add a contract for engineering services with SEH to be a part of the Seal Code operations, the joint venture that Olivia puts on each year that we participated in last year.
With SEH, you said?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Rick, second by Brad, to approve the agenda with the addition of 18 and 19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. In front of us here, we have a copy of the lease with the, for the railroad and the depot. And Ralph, you wanted to say?
Yeah, you know, before we get too far down the road of getting behind that financially, first off, I think most of us agree it's an asset to the town. And it's wonderful to have. And it's much cheaper to keep it than it is to try to build it again. So we applaud the efforts and we want to move forward with that. But when I look at this lease, I, you know, I want some legal clarification on who actually owns this property? And what does property mean? When it refers to property and then it refers to upkeep of the buildings, is that part of that? And I can give you a copy of this and you can, you can do your legal stuff.
I guess, I guess we're kind of asking you to do that so you can probably come back to us next month.
Okay.
So we have, there's just some questions.
Yeah, and just questions of like, who really owns what? And if we're going to be putting money into it, who's going to own that? You know, and are all, are all the signatories on this, are they still, are they still in place? You know, do all of these boards that are mentioned here, do they still exist? And are they still the ones that are in control of that piece? That's important for me to know.
I think we just want to know this, just for information before we get, as you said, before we start, you know, the money, it's a very, very big asset for Fairfax.
Okay.
Okay, so we won't be taking action on that then this month, we'll do that next month. So then moving on, moving on to seven, considering the word of the 2018 infrastructure project bid. Andy?
Good evening. In response to the advertisement for bids, the city received a call for the construction of the 2018-2019 street and utility improvements. And those bids range between $1,997,832.29 up to $2,362,540.50. MR Paving and Excavating of Nemo was the whole bidder. They were about 3% below the engineer's estimate and their bid came in pretty much right in the middle of the range that we, we thought it would be during the preliminary engineering report stage. MR has identified a number of their subcontractors, Warden Lights out of Minneapolis, Midstates Reclamation out of Lakeville, Woodmire Construction out of Mankato, DJ Sandell Construction out of Lissure and Cornerstoke, excuse me, Cornerpost, Ocean Control, and Hutchinson. And that's really a similar team that MR has worked with before. And we've worked with MR Paving and Excavating on many projects in the past also. In terms of the, of the project, we've got some permit application with Minna that we probably don't have quite in hand yet, but that's one. Rick's finishing up some of the Eastman acquisitions, so I think we're in a position, the council is to make a word of the work. If we don't have all of those things in hand by the time the contracts are back and the contractors are ready to get started, we might have to condition the notice to proceed takes. Any area that you, there's plenty of work to be done, so. So assuming that the council wants to continue with the, with the project, we recommend award of the work to MR Paving and Excavating on Nemo. We want $1,997,832.29.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for him? Anybody? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess with that, then if there aren't any questions, we move on to a motion to pass resolution 2018-6, which is for the infrastructure project and awarding the bid to MR Paving Do I have that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Brad, second from Rick, to approve resolution 2018-6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then we're moving on to the resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of the general obligation bonds.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Shannon, it's Renatey David-Grown Associates. I'm here to talk about financing for the project that you just awarded the contract on. When we add in construction, engineering, small contingency, finance, legal fees, et cetera, we come up with a project cost of about $2,658,122. What we're suggesting is that we issue geo improvement and utility revenue bonds, can involve $2,655,000 to come from proposed project costs. We're recommending a competitive sale of bonds, meaning that we would prepare an offering document that would describe the project and the city's ability to repay the debt associated with this project. We'd provide that document to various underwriters for the purpose of bidding on the acquisition of the bonds. At your June 12 meeting, we would present bids to you for award, which would essentially lock in an interest rate on the proposed project financing. In your packet along with the memo that I provided is a preliminary bond schedule that outlines our talks and what the financial for the project would look like. It's this schedule, lots of small print with lots of numbers, but ultimately, the important things for you to note are the average annual payments currently projected at about $183,000 per year. The interest rate that we measure the market conditions on is basically a combination of the interest rate paid on the principal, as well as the fee that the underwriter charges that would be dealing on the bond issue. And we're projecting about a 3.46, we'll call it three and a half percent interest rate based on current conditions. We've used a term that's approximately 20 years or 20 principal payments beginning February 1st of 2020. One of the reasons for the delay is we have some debt that's dropping off in 19, and we wanted to structure around that payment, that final payment that's being made on a PFA loan. It's a state of Minnesota loan that the city's paying roughly 80 grand a year, I believe, from the water fund. And so that's going to free up some additional ability to help make these payments without having as immediate and significant impact on rates. You'll note that the projected tax levy associated with the issue is about $23,000 per year. Again, the water fund is projected to contribute $80,000 a year, but again, we have an obligation that's dropping off in 2018 for the water fund, 2019, I'm sorry, which helps us make that 2020 payment. Sanitary sewer and storm sewer revenues are each contributing about 27 grand a year. And we have special assessments associated with the project that are presently estimated to be $469,000. We're expecting that those will be certified in 2018 for collection in 2019. What we've used for our schedule so far is a 20-year term on those assessments at four and a half percent interest. So I'm sure Andy's taken note of that for the assessment hearing that will be required this fall, if we haven't already. So, you know, one of the probably most notable things about managing something like this is prepayment and special assessments. And so that's something that we would assist the city in monitoring. If we get lots of prepaid special assessments, we'll want to invest those as best we can until we reach the call date on the bond issue, which is the first opportunity to prepay. Right now, we have a call date of February 1st, 2026, would be the first opportunity to prepay bonds. The reason it's structured out that far is because if we have a call date that's any earlier than that, we would pay a slightly higher interest rate. And so if you communicate to me that it's important to be able to prepay bonds sooner, I'd be happy to build that in, but understand you'll pay about five tenths of the percent to a tenth of the percent in higher interest on bond. This amount of money, that adds up to be a little bit of money. So we don't expect that you're going to have a strong interest in prepaying that quickly, so we take the savings over the short, the better terms, I guess, if we go to the call. Again, our schedule includes authorizing the sale process, which is the resolution that's before you tonight. Essentially, you're directing us to prepare that offering document to secure a credit rating for the community, which involves a management call with your city administrator and myself, answer a variety of financial questions on the community, and we'll get a credit rating from Standard and Poor's. That credit rating will ultimately result in an interest rate that's about three quarters of a percent lower than if we didn't purchase a credit rating. So while the credit rating's expensive, I believe it's projected to be about $11,500, it'll save us tens of thousands of dollars in interest and money for the issue. That money isn't paid to us, it's paid to Standard and Poor's, who's in Chicago and New York City. If we could avoid the cost and the hassle, we would, but frankly, it saves us a lot of interest expense. And so we feel it's worthwhile to do, and we do recommend going through that process. But ultimately, we would complete the credit rating process, collect the bids for the purchase of the bonds on June 12, present them to you that evening for award, and then closing would be on or about July 2nd, when funds are available to pay project costs. So, again, that resolution in your packet initiates this process, it doesn't obligate you to do anything yet other than purchase a credit rating and go to market. The obligation will come when we present bids for your award at your meeting in June. So happy to answer any questions yet when the material is provided.
Questions, guys?
No.
Okay, then, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay, so then if there are no questions, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of $2,655,000 of general obligation improvement and utility revenue bond, series 2018A. Do I have that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Rick, second by Ralph, to approve that resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, then we're moving on down to the consent agenda. And are there any questions on any of this? The minutes, the plans for payment? I did have one question, plans for payment. You pay Tyler Technologies our annual fee, what is that for? Amortization fee, is that?
That is for the hardware we have, with the fire ports and existing services.
Okay, okay. And the United Community Action Grant payment?
That's the small cities.
Small cities, yep.
Their administrative.
Okay. And the invoice for paying Bolton and Mint for engineering services, and we have all this in here, the parade route with street closure, the base of Thunder, and then the approval assessment services agreement of Ranville County. Any questions on any of those? If not, I'm going to ask for approval on the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ralph, second by Rick, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, then moving on to new business. We have 15A, we have Stephen Pack's folks that are asking for a variance to allow them to buy their residence in a manufacturing district, and we just, we would have to change that. Stephen Pack, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I was just wondering why it's zone manufacturing, because most of that is agriculture right now. There's not much about that city manufacturing anymore.
Right, but a long time ago, that was designated an industrial area.
Yeah.
And it never was changed. In fact, I think that's been, the land's been sold now, so it's, you know.
Right.
Yeah, so actually, it's, it should not be, it should be sold that way.
That's the other one, yeah.
Yeah. So, does anyone have any questions for Stephen Pack?
No.
Okay, then I think we need a motion then, to that we would have a public hearing for this?
I'll make a motion.
If I may, we look at A and B, and if we'd like to have a public hearing, we can have one for both at the same time.
Okay.
Both are in your request.
Okay, then B, Mike, do you have anything to say?
No. Any questions for me there?
Okay, I guess I have one question, Mike, and that is, are you planning, okay, I'm looking at your lot here.
Yep.
And are you planning to go to the south of your existing buildings?
No, that project will be taken down.
That'll be taken down, but where are you building this?
Be a 11-foot stall on the side, the east side rails, and two stalls in front.
Okay, do you have a drawing at all of that?
Yes, I, I, yeah.
I just got this before the meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that.
Okay. Okay.
So it's, it's this way?
Yep.
And this is, the blue is your current house?
Yes.
So then the garage kind of wraps around the front and comes down, comes 53 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
From the back of the house, 53 feet to the front.
To the front.
It's double, it'll be like a double beep on that stall, double white off the front.
Okay.
Okay, so, any questions for them, or shall we just go and say we'll have a public hearing for that variance for both of them next month? Put that on the agenda?
Yeah, for June 12 at 7:00 PM on our agenda.
Yes, okay, and your motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
What's the process for that? Do we notify the neighbors and that, that's, you do that?
Yes, the process for that is I sent, we send out notifications, written and mail notifications of the various requests, all property owners within 350 feet of the affected property. So from, and that's the border of the property, not at singular point in the center. So we draw a radius around that, and every property within 350 feet, we'll get a notice of the hearing. And just for good measure, we'll publish it in the paper, too.
Okay, questions about it, anything else? Not, I need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second, okay, motion by Rick, second by Brad, that we will have the public hearing for zone variance requests on, on, at our next council meeting, which is at 7:00. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, so there'll be a public hearing next?
We'll know that day?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
But, sir, we have to go through the process.
Yeah, I just kind of love to get going. So, thank you.
Okay, then let's discuss the P E R A, information that we got in our packet. Get some more thinking here.
Give Mike the counterpact during the painting.
I know, okay. Oh, make a point, okay. You want to stack a little now?
Certainly, Mayor, thank you very much. Starting from the basics, the Public Employees Retirement Association, or CARA, that's a statewide agency that, if you're a public employee, you have retirement into your hands. Some years ago, they started off the Para Fire Relief, or Volunteer Fire Retirement System as a wing under this. And that was designed for fire relief associations who were responsible for investing their own funds to make sure they had enough to meet the retirement needs of their volunteer fire departments. They were getting aged and there weren't a lot of people coming through that wanted to take that over, take over that responsibility. So it was brought to Para as idea, they formed the system, and now volunteer fire relief associations can elect to join that system. So Para takes over the management of those investment funds, which is really their bread and butter, what they do anyway. The city of Fairfax joined that fund in, on January 1st of 2013 is when the city switched over, and the fire relief funds went from being privately managed to the Para system. At that time, prior to joining, the benefit level associated with service, with that, when you join the fire department, once you are there for so many years, and I believe it's 20, you need to have vested in, then you are el-
10.
10?
You have 10.
Is it 10? I thought it was 20.
You double check it, but I think it's, you're vested after 10 years.
After 10, you're.
You double check on it, but I think that's what it is.
Okay, well, you-
Very good.
You're fired, Mr. President.
So after 10 years, you become vested, and then you become eligible for the retirement benefit amount. Prior to the fire relief association joining that, their benefit level was at $1,700. I'm not sure what occurred at that time, but when they switched over to Para, it was then $1,500 was the benefit level. After five years of joining the Para system, you can have an analysis done, which Para does on your behalf, there's no cost to it. They go through their formula, and you can choose certain benefit levels to say, well, if we went to this level, what would the impact be? And really, what a city is searching for is what's the threshold before the city has to contribute, a mandatory contribution towards that, that retirement fund? And right now, the city doesn't have to contribute anything, but if you had a much higher benefit level, then Para would say you have to pitch in city to make sure that when these retirements come due, the money's there to pay for it, so it's affordable. So that's what this now piece of analysis paper looks at. It looks at four different funding levels, 1,700, 1,800, 1,900, and 2,000. And lines B, lines B through I are their analysis numbers, it's them showing their work. The big one that we want to look at is that J one, and that's why they have it highlighted, the estimated municipal required contribution. If there was a number in there, that's how much the city would have to, have to contribute at that, at that benefit level. So you can see up to 2,000, there is no required contribution. If you went to 2,100, I would be willing to bet you'd see a contribution of some dollar amount. So looking at that, you could go up to $2,000 and not have to pitch anything at this time. However, as anybody knows the market, you want to hedge your bets, you want to have a little bit of cushion just in case things go south. So you see below J there, the funding ratio, and that tells how well-funded it is. You want 100% or better. If it drops below 100%, then you start having a required contribution. Even at the $1,700 level, we have a nice cushion there. So if council wants to think about it, come back to the next meeting if they want to raise that benefit level.
Nick, can you explain line F for me, and what that means, and why that's, why there's a number there for that last one when there isn't for the other four, for the other three?
It's going to be minus D divided by 10.
F, yeah.
Yep.
That estimated deficit amortization payment, does that mean you're eating into your principal to pay at that $2,000 level?
Yep, yep. The equation on that is E minus D divided by 10, so you have your estimated beginning liability, and that's going to be what you're looking at paying out over the life against the estimated asset value of what you currently have and receipts. So that's going to look at, what is your liability, depending on E is that liability you're going to have at each of these levels. You see the numbers change there from 342 all the way up to 381. And that is directly against what the asset value would be at the present time. They don't project in the future, they think it'll be its present value. And then, once you have a difference in that, that's where you start seeing the funding ratio, a bit below the 100%, and then you start eating into that, and then you're going to start seeing the city have to contribute to make or get deficits.
Okay.
Does everyone want to just think about this?
I think we'll come back and look at that.
We'll come back to this, we'll put it down, we'll finish business for next week?
Yep.
Okay, then, I guess the next thing here is the approval of performance evaluation statement for the city administration. I have a statement to make. We met for the purposes of performance evaluation for Nicholas, tonight at 6 o'clock, and the mayor and city council members evaluated him in areas reflecting job knowledge and abilities. And Nicholas was ranked that he meets all expectations in the overall categories, and he, our ratings went from one to five, and five is that he meets six, or five is the highest you can go, one is the lowest, three is meeting expectations are above average, and that is where he was rated. Okay?
Does that make sense for what you want to write down? Yes, okay.
Got it? Okay, I think that's it.
Yep, that's good.
We don't need a motion, do we?
No.
Okay, then, I need to move on, and we got an 18. Jed has said that he would come on the EDA board, and we're happy to welcome him, but we need a motion to approve him.
I'll make a motion.
I'll, do I have a second?
Second, I have a motion.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded, that Jed Lutkin be a member of the EDA board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Moving on to 19, contracting with SEH for the streets.
Seal code.
Yep, seal coding. You have any comments, Nick?
The wording of the contract is very similar to the one from last year, which the city participated. The payment, the lump sum fee is 3,000, including expenses, equipment, that's a not-to-exceed amount, a lump sum of that. They do have payment for additional, if there's overages on certain situations. Last year when we did it, we paid $450.50 of that 3,000. The bit, the work went, went real smooth, and then we didn't elect for a number of the engineering services, since it's a seal coding, what we're, what Olivia does is they get cities together to do bulk buying together, and they have short Elliott Hendrickson, SEH, manage that from an engineering perspective. So we're buying into that joint venture buying, so we can get better pricing overall on it. But with that 3,000, they talk, I talked to the engineer, and I said, well, that's site visits by engineering, watching, we have a seal coding work, a lot of that stuff, we don't need that. So we cut a lot of that out, and that'll bring that 3,000 down by quite a bit.
Okay, any questions on that?
No.
Then we need a motion to accept that contract.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Brad, to accept the contract with SEH for the seal coding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Moving down the stack, of course.
There we go. That's all I know comes on. I, hey, that.
I couldn't see if Scott was going to get here.
So I have the financial report for April 2018. For the general fund revenue, revenue side, we're still seeing ambulance revenues coming in on target, as they should be, and garbage revenues are still on target as well. Coming up in May, we should be getting our tax settlement, which will help boost the general fund reserves, and then in June, we should see our LGA, LGA, LGA payments, which is local government data from the state of Minnesota. Those two, the tax settlement and the LGA, make up the majority of the money that the city, the general fund specifically relies on for operation. The rest is filled by the ambulance revenues, the garbage revenues, fees, and other things like that, reimbursements that we get. And when I'm getting the budget, I'll have a nice breakdown of what that looks like. General fund expenses this month, we had a number of them, a number of larger ones come out of the general fund. We had small cities payments that we made, that was at, to about $51,000, because there were a couple of, that we had to get processed, there were two or three of them involved in that. We had infrastructure project engineering. We had infrastructure project engineering, we had the snow removal payments, now that the season is over. So now that the season is over, we made payments to our contractors on that, so that's now done and over with, and then we did also have streetlight purchases. If you'll notice, Joel and his public work staff work diligently in uptown here, if this meeting lasts long enough and the lights turn on, we have the new LED lights installed One thing to note is, once we have the 2018 infrastructure bonding in place, when we get those funds, we reimburse ourselves in the general fund with that bond funding, because right now, the engineering fees and the printing of the advertisements, things like that, that's being paid for by the general fund, so when we get those bond proceeds, the general fund will be reimbursed all that money, which will boost that amount back to what it should be. On the water fund end of things, water sales are slightly under-budgeted amounts, summer months and summer watering should help offset that. On the water fund expense side of things, we need to keep an eye on training and repair expenditures, they're a little on the higher side of where they ought to be, so we'll just keep that in mind, but one thing we can't control is when things break, but we always try to make sure we have enough budgeted to make sure we can get through, so we'll keep an eye on those things. On the wastewater fund side of things, wastewater sales are stable and on track for budgeted amounts, coming in where we hope they will. And again, with the wastewater fund as well, we keep an eye on training and repair expenditures there as well, they're a little bit higher, so we'll see how the rest of the year goes. I don't know if we have a whole lot more training on the water wastewater end left to do this year.
No, there shouldn't be much left.
So we should be all right on that end?
The rest of the stuff should basically just be free classes.
All right. On the storm sewer end of things, storm sewer sales on track and are unstable, and there's not a whole lot of expense activity in the storm sewer fund, except for bond payments and depreciation, so everything's normal and expected there. On the electric fund side of things, electric sales are coming in above target for budgeted amounts. Overall, on the expense side of things, we're doing well, some areas are a bit higher while others are a bit lower, I will continue to monitor that as the year goes on, but overall, it's coming in well. On the natural gas end of things, sales are coming in above target, but our sales drop off significantly in the summer months as people stop using natural gas, but those will pick up again in the later fall when things cool down and when our farm customers start, may start drying again. Other than that, then expenditures are normal and expected. And the liquor fund end of things, liquor fund sales are coming in below budget, we had talked about this during my performance review, some of the more, some reports I want to start getting out is, have a better analysis of the trends of that happening from a year-to-year standpoint, so we have a better understanding of how those ebbs and flows go. But on the other end of things, expenditures are coming in below budget as well. So looking at investments in cash balance, we have the prior there, so general fund, we had, like I mentioned at the start there, we had those big expenditures hit, so that brought us down, water fund is up a bit, sewer fund is up a bit, storm, electric, and natural gas are all up, and then liquor is down a bit. So total overall is down a bit, but once we get those tax settlements, LGA payments, you'll see that general fund boost back up again. Any questions on the financial statements? On for things to talk about? Did you get the email from the superintendent, be on?
It's a Monday morning at 10:00.
Okay, so would you like me to attend on that?
Please.
I will do so.
And if it would work out, I mean, if I could see, could we both go?
Yeah, we could, we could both.
You go for sure, and I'll see if, I'll see what I can do, I would like to go.
Okay, I'll let her know that.
Yeah.
Another thing, I know the school has a committee for looking at the facilities for a future referendum, I would like council feedback if you would like me to be on that, I have experience with building projects and things of that nature, but I don't know if you want to see that crossing of that line between school and city like that.
Let's think about that.
Okay. Can do. We'll have our budget workshop starting at the June meetings here, so we're going to gear up for that, that's going to be a whole lot of fun, I invite everybody to come out for the budget talks, it's super exciting, it's not boring at all, I swear.
You're trying to talk it out.
Been working on doing a little bit more building of our Facebook page as we get these nice summer months, what I like to do is, as things go along, we have the pool that's being filled up, so I went down and took some pictures of that being filled, we have the sidewalk going in at Memorial Park, so I got a few pictures of that starting, got a few pictures of the baseball field now that it's, Jim's doing an excellent job down there with that. And then as the street project comes back in to finish the 2017 side of things, it starts the 18 side of things, I like to get pictures, and then it gives an opportunity through our social media to update the citizens on what's going on and where exactly they have a good idea. With the infrastructure projects, I like to do regular updates on that, which construction areas are up for where the engineers should be putting out, this is what the contractor's looking to do in this area, and what's exactly being done, whether it be reclamation, or boulevard work, or paving, or things of that nature. Get that up so people can see it, and they know, okay, my area's going to be affected next week, or this is happening this week, just a lot of good things like that. Cleanup days went well, we adjusted the hours a little bit this year, in prior years, it was nine to five on Friday, and then nine to noon on Saturday, we adjusted that to be one to seven on Friday. Reasoning behind that was, is being a Friday, most people are going to be working, so that nine to five didn't seem to work too well, so we adjusted it to have some after-work hours so people could get out there after work and get things dropped off. Seemed to go all right, we're still touching base with our volunteers to see what the counts kind of were as the day went on, so we might adjust that again in the future. In the future, we probably look at, we had some volunteers drop off this year, so we had to have city help go in on Saturday and man the fort. In future years, we'll probably look at, continue working with volunteers, but slowly work to have city staff taking that over, adds another level of control and resource utilization. Not to say the volunteers don't do a bad job, a good job, not saying that at all, but usually you have a greater, a level of greater control with city staff where they're here to hear to hear as well. And then next year, I spoke with the recycling program, every first weekend, I think it is of the month, the recycling is open, and bring things in. I've talked with them, and they said they were interested in joining up with our city cleanup days, so they would come down, bring their dumpsters, so, because right now, we charge for some of the appliances and things like that, and those are normally things that they would take for free, so they're willing to pair with us to the same site so that we wouldn't have to charge for some of those things, just adding that greater flexibility for our citizens on that. I believe that's all I have. I want to give a big thanks to Joel and his crew, who's getting everything ready for the summer months. Mowing's already started, getting all the plows put away, pool's getting in order, park's looking nice. It all takes a lot of effort, thankful for them for doing a good job on that.
Spread the word.
Okay, you barely had time for the snow to the lawns, did you?
No, not really.
Okay.
As Nick said, we're filling the pool, sidewalks going in by the park, our LED lights are installed uptown. Just so you're aware of it, I don't know if Nick told you, but we have to replace one of the, it's kind of like a photo eye or a sensor that tells the water levels in the lift station, at the main lift, it's, the readings are going bad on it, so we have to replace that, so that'll have to be done fairly soon here, I'm waiting for, I think it's ordered, I just got to get a timeline when they're going to be here to put it in, so. Been sweeping streets, we had a few underground breaks that we got, they're all fixed now, except for the light pole that was taken out on the highway, we just got to fix that and wait for a bulb to come for that, yeah. The fence at the Lions Park, I talked to Bob Valley Fence, and he's hoping to get here by June to have it done, he said if he has to, it'll work weekends to try and get it done, and I could tell him if we could just get one field done too, you know, that'd be good too, so. And I informed Johnny Close and a few others that are going to be using it, just so they're aware of what's going on. We had our min ops inspection for our gas, everything went good with that, we just had a few minor adjustments with our policy and our safety manual, and I think MR is thinking we'll come to do the top coat on in the last year's street project, starting in June, I believe, so, and then there'll be, concrete guys will be coming to do repairing some of the curbs that are cracked over the winter, and they'll be getting fixed, so. And we also have to install a new meter at the TBS station, they did a test on it, and just from its age and the use, it's starting to wear out, and he said it doesn't pay to, they could take it in and sand it down, it's got some grooves in it, in the fins, but they said.
You want to give a little bit more background of what the TBS station is?
Our TBS station is where all of our gas comes in, and it goes out, and that's, this meter reads everything that goes out to the city, so it's been all the, all the use from all the gas over the years going through, just the age of it, and it just needs to be replaced, because he said he can fix it, but he doesn't know how long it'll last if he just sands it down, then they test it for accuracy within, so like when one reads our meters, and our meters are red, and theirs, and if it doesn't jive, then ours would be off even more if we didn't replace it, so. Other than that, we got some snowplow repairs to do, but the last snowstorm was a little hard on equipment, so. On May 11th, though, for cleanup day, what time are you doing that again?
2:00.
2:00, okay.
Volunteers come up to the town, and then are up to the school.
And then you just need brooms and shovels?
Brooms and shovels, yeah, and we'll sweep out.
Okay, then you want the?
Truck.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then were you involved in the elevator rescue after school?
Oh, yes, I was, yeah, I was there. Did you get a key for that now?
For the elevator?
Yeah.
Or for that knock?
Just for the door, because there was no key for that elevator door in that knockbox?
Well, I don't know if that's in there or not.
Okay, I'll have to ask, your maintenance guy maybe will know, so, yeah, okay. Yeah, that was an interesting deal.
We had somebody get stuck in the elevator, the afterthought committee, I get a phone call, we have somebody stuck in the elevator, come up.
Oh, well, you got to take care of it. Okay, thank you, Joel.
Yep.
Brittany, you're next.
So, previously on Google, we were very, very fine, so I got some of the Google, we got the name change down there, we got my phone number, my dollars, we got all that arranged and taken care of. I also set up a new Facebook page to reduce our social media presence, we've been trying to post at least once a day, we do a picture of our special, and we're trying to keep our liquor sales and everything up to date with that as well. We did an event for Single De Mile, we had a bunch of beers on special and stuff like that, that seemed to go well, we had a good turnout, so that was nice. I'm working with Winnie on some more liquor sale ideas, we started a monthly liquor sale, we're also adding individual beers to the daily sales, working on some more events, like we have a southern planting coming up, and beer tasting from some microbreweries. Our fan in the kitchen actually went out a couple weeks ago, so we're working with my kicker on getting the parts installed and all that, so we don't have to worry about the natural gas and the hazards of that. We have one new employee that started last week, and then we actually fashed one employee at the beginning of the month, just because maybe it wasn't anything major, but, so.
Okay, thank you. Then, moving on to, you have the building permit list in your packet, you got 20 minutes, the small cities, but don't leave packing report, and any comments on that, and if not, we have any council members individual items that you'd like to bring up? No? Everybody's happy, everything is good? Okay. Guys, you're naughty tonight. Okay, if not, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I need a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.